Good morning chats! My name is Ken Bular, I'm a programming, puzzle gaming, and music making VTuber on Linux and today, we're finally programming, finally gonna work on Awafudge. Uh, it's gonna be a bit of a work session today, so... Don't, uh, perhaps don't expect too much entertainment, but uh, you can use this timed if you don't, if you aren't too interested in the programming aspect to, uh, to work on your own stuff and be productive. Uh, Hassel, welcome in! Uh, and yeah, sorry for, um, pushing the stream over by a day. Uh, it seems... My, my PC tends to die when uh, when the memory gets, uh, memory usage gets too high, for some reason. Um, I haven't quite figured out why. But that happened, Firefox is probably taking up too much memory. Uh, and so I figured if it was dead already, and it already rebooted, or, or shut down, then um, may as well take the time to install the new drives. Um, and so if you were around last night, um, and thanks Hassel for joining in last night too. Um, where did I put these? Alright, so this is the interior of my PC. Uh, we ended up installing some new drives in it. These are two, eight terabytes, uh, WD Blues. Um, and we've made them into a RAID configuration, uh, RAID 1 using LVM. Uh, and so far it seems to work. I already have the data, some of the data transferred over. Um, it was a little bit slow, but you know, those are hard drives. Uh, and then this is here, it's here running. Um, so I got them at the bottom, bottom bay there. You can also see the Intel Arc that I'm using. And, uh, yeah. So far so good, we'll see if it fails. Um, but now I have an extra... Where is this? Not that one, let's block. Now I have an extra eight terabytes, um, across SDA and SDP, uh, which are the two hard drives. Uh, and I will be using that for, uh, stream recordings, because stream recordings take about ten, nine to ten gigs per three hours. Um, and so it fills up pretty quickly. Eight terabytes should last me quite a while. Okay, so Awafudge, it's been a while, um... So i-if, uh, you haven't seen this before, uh, I hope you can read this. Uh, Awafudge is the programming language that, um, that I made, inspired by, uh, Faceconnect VTuber, uh, Jelly Hotshumi. Um, he, her, one of her catchphrases is, uh, is "awawa." Um, and so, I figured, uh, it's a very easy, there's a very easy way to transform, uh, the esoteric programming language, BrainF, that looks like this, uh, into something that's more "awa" like, uh, so we're doing this here, that's the mapping. Uh, and we got a good, uh, good way in, but we have a parser file, I will show in a bit, uh, that translates between these two languages, but now we want to insert a, um, an intermediate language. And, uh, I think the last time we got as far as, uh, defining what that intermediate language is and writing tests around it, but we need to change our parser files to actually, uh, to actually output that. And so, I am still a little bit underprepared, uh, even though I delayed stream for a while, but, um... Let's see. The repo, by the way, if you want to see where we're at right now, is, uh, should be linked to in the description. Just gotta find my way around here and see what we end up doing here. I think the formatter, is it the formatter? The formatter takes in, okay, that's what we're working on, yeah. The formatter takes in, uh, certain tokens, so this is the intermediate language. Um, and then it's... Outputs the, the actual language. And so last time we were working on these tests here, the formatters, because of course you gotta have, uh, unit tests to make sure everything works properly. Um, and so we did all of that. And I think we managed to finish that, and same thing for the other side too. Um, but what we're missing here are the tests for the parsers, so we're gonna work on that. Uh, but also, we're going to work on the module that actually interprets these, uh, inter, this intermediate language, uh, so then we can actually run something. Um, so if you haven't heard of this language before, uh, Eso Ling... It basically models a, a Turing machine almost. Uh, so you have these, uh, so the model, do I not have, I guess there isn't. A Turing machine. Whatever, I can find something here. Turing tape? Tape? Uh, basically like this. Alright, so the, the idea here is that you have a tape, uh, and you have a pointer to the tape. Uh, the tape has a bunch of cells in it and contains numbers. Uh, in the case of the language, it has numbers from zero to 255, uh, and it loops around. And your program says you can either move the, the heads, uh, to the left, to the right, uh, you can check if it's zero, uh, or if it increments or decrement the number that's inside the tape. And with, and you can also read and write from, from the tape. And with that, you can actually compute anything. It's powerful enough to compute everything, although the, um, it might not be easy to compute everything, um, certain things. Uh, but that's called, um, uh, that idea is called turn completeness, uh, the ability to compute anything that is computable. Um, so that's what we have here. And in our case, we are looking to modify our parsers written in JSON. Uh, with JSON being a JavaScript port of the, uh, of the GNU Bison, which itself is, uh, I think a reimplementation of Yak. And Yak, uh, yet another compiler compiler is basically, uh, a way for you to define the grammar of a language, and then it outputs a parser, uh, that accepts that language and, and outputs something else. Uh, so in our case, we're defining what Awafudge, uh, what Awafudge looks like, and then based on that, we are outputting tokens. Um, in this case, uh, translating the, uh, to the other language. Um, so outputting tokens to that effect. But we want to change this, so that it's not outputting between languages, it's outputting to the intermediate language. Which shouldn't be too difficult, but we do need to write tests around it. Which, sorry, we had some sort of test here. Which we did, I think it's this one. Yeah, so we're just going to take this test, and then change it to, uh, output the the intermediate language, which is gonna be a little bit annoying. But, you know, unit tests are like that sometimes. I think I just copy this over, actually, uh, copy, we're gonna start with... I guess Awafudge might be the easiest. Your test, uh, parser is Awafudge. I'm gonna refresh. Okay. Now where do we start from here? Uh, source parser is Awafudge, we're gonna change this up so that it's no longer this, it's going to be, actually, this is still the same. But we do need a different assertion, it's not no, it's no more along, ah, words, it's no longer strict equal. Uh, node assert. Because we can't do strict equality, uh, if we're trying to check for, uh, a deep equal. We need something deep equal. A deep strict equal, I think is what we want. "Test for deep equality between actual and expected parameters." Uh, deep equality means that the enumerable own properties of child objects are recursively evaluated by also following the rules. What that basically means is that if it's an object, or if it's an array, it's going to compare inside the object and array. Just to make sure it has the same properties and, uh, same values. Okay. So I don't know how we're gonna be able to do this piecewise. Um... Might want to try... What does this look like? It's supposed to be an array of tokens. We're looking at, you know, and one of the things I wish I did here was, uh, write this in TypeScript so that we have types. But I didn't do that. I do have token types in a const, which would normally be in enum in TypeScript. Um... But we have the process directors. Ah, I, I don't remember what that is. So this was working on a bug and I don't remember what that was. But anyway, the tokens should be, what does a token look like? Now, token, we have a type. This is where TypeScript would have helped. We got, uh, a token has the form, uh... Type, which is a token type. And then it has count, depending on the, depending on the type, which is a number. And then it has potentially content, which is, uh, another token. Or token array, I guess. So this only have, and we only get this if it's, uh, if it's a loop type, because the loop is the only one that has children. Uh, and the other ones, we have counts. Um, if they are left shift and right shift, otherwise the read and writes, uh, just have the type. And so that should be fairly simple, I think. We're just going to have to, uh, do that over here. So at the individual level here, we have decrement. Uh, we have $1 dot length. Uh, dot length here gives us the number of times this was repeated. Um, so with this, we can easily replace with something like type is, uh... Need the token types. Token types. Uh, token type dots, right shift, left shift, decrement. Um, it would maybe make sense to import this. I'm not entirely sure how that's supposed to work, though. How are you all doing, by the way? Hope it's been a good, uh, morning. Well, at least for me, it's still, well, it's past noon now, I guess I can't, can't call it morning. How do we use this thing? Lexical analysis, tracking locations. I saw this somewhere, there is a way for you to put in, uh, like put in preamble text somewhere. Chilling, looking all is good, waiting for your hair to dry. I should probably go take a shower at some point too, sometime today. Where is this? The, so one, one thing I've noticed about the JSON docs is that it's not very easy to find things. Uh, that's, I think in part because I'm, I'm glossing over a lot of things, but also, you know. Okay, alright, I'll leave that alone. I'm just gonna make these, um, we're gonna hardcode the tokens here. It's not great, but at least it's gonna work for now. Uh, we can fix it later. So type and count is repeats dot, or $1 dot length. And then we just do the same thing for the rest of these. Um, well, actually, what we want to do is, uh, write the tests first. So parse the empty string, parse, uh, this should be deep equal. Uh, deep strict equal. I don't have all any completion here. Strict deep equal? Deep strict equal, oh, that is correct, okay. And then our expected is the empty string here. We're gonna go by test by test. Um... So, we're going to change all of the its to, uh, it dot skip, so that we don't actually run them, and so that doesn't give us errors. Uh... I'm gonna run this with npm test. Not find module, source parser is Awafudge. As I moved it into a directory. Alright, this is expected, we haven't changed anything. What we want to do here is, uh, have a TDD, uh, TD workflow, test-driven development, where we uh, write a test, or make the test fail, change the, uh, code so that it passes, uh, and then refactor as necessary. And so this allows us to, uh, work in parts, and make sure that each parts works. As opposed to doing everything at once, and then finding out that it doesn't work, and we have to hunt down which exactly, which parts exactly don't work and all that. Uh, so this is, this will allow us to be a little bit more confident in, um, in our changes. So, and then we if we, uh, do that, gonna change a little bit. Uh, this is still going to fail. Because we need to compile. We have here build parser Awafudge, which is what we want. Because we need to compile the, uh, the grammar file into an actual parser. I think that's still okay. Alright, uh, this is expected, not, well, yes it is, because we still have the olds. We still have the old test file. Actually, we're gonna need to, we're gonna comment this out. Because we don't need any of this anymore. And this is what we expect to happen. Um, because we, we did change this, we haven't changed anything that uses it. Uh, so decrement is this one here, that's fine, that starts saying that, um, the token for this should be the same as what we got when we recursed down. And then, we have operations, operation, concatenate this one. Uh, so two should already be an array, I think. So if two is an array, so $1 here refers to this one here, the operations, this is our recursive loop. Uh, we're saying that an operations is a bunch of operations, uh, followed by one another. So zero or more operations before, and then one operation afterwards. Or an operation, or a bunch of operations followed by some sort of space, and then operation afterwards. I think we had to do it this way for, um, for parsing reasons. There was something, there was something that, uh, caused it to be somewhat ambiguous. Uh, so I'm not entirely sure this is necessary, there, there had to have been something, uh, something there, but... What I think what we want is, we don't want this join trim anymore, because it's no longer a string. But these are all arrays. We want this in one giant array, so we don't want to do that. We want to return the array by itself. And hopefully that causes, uh, okay. Actually, we need to compile first, then build parser Awafudge, uh, and then test, and hopefully it works, there we go. Normally at this point, we would commit. I think we can just continue on with the rest of this. It'd be fine. Uh, it would be smart to commit, because in case we change anything and it breaks, it would be good to have, uh, some sort of fallback, but it's okay. Deep strict equal, the parse an empty right shift instruction, so that's the next one. Uh, in our case, the right shift would be this one, and it's gonna be the same thing. Uh, we want like this. $1 length is the same, uh, but we changed this decrement to right shift like that. I'm gonna wait and check if it works. Uh... Build, so we're gonna build this and then npm test in one command. That's not right. Parse an empty right shift instruction. Right, because we haven't actually changed our, um, our expectation here. Uh, so type is... And this is going to be, uh, more and more tedious to, uh, to type out as we go along. So actually, for this one, I might just copy it. Or not. Um... And then I'm going to, because we actually do have access to this token type stuff. I use that in here, so that we, uh, cut down on the number of things that we end up having to change if we ever do change these. Uh, so const token type from source slash token types, I think is where it is. Uh, token type dots, right shift. I guess we can't figure it out yet. Ah! No, no. Okay, whatever. Right shift, like that. Right shift. Uh, count to zero. And this should be an array. Okay, that should be good now. Great. And now we repeat, and this is why this is a work session, because there's a lot of repetition. Um, this is the kind of stuff that you would normally do offline, off-stream, um, because it is so repetitive. But, I have proven to myself that I can't seem to get any work done on this project, unless it's on stream, so here we are. So deep strict equal, and this is gonna be the same thing. But instead, it's going to be a single right shift instruction, which means we have a count of one. And then we shouldn't have to change the, uh, the parser because it should just work. There we go. And then same thing here. Uh, but with the count of three this time because we have three of them. Oh! Values have the same structure now reference equal because I need to change it to this. So I'm gonna change that all now. Uh, strict equal to, uh, deep strict equal. But I'll have to deal with it later. Alright, well, the number just keeps going up and up. Uh, parse an empty left shift instruction, so this is gonna be the same thing, but instead of right shift, we have left shift. And, uh, count, uh, zero. Take left. And now we actually have to change this one. So instead of, uh, the right shift, we need to do the left here. Uh, and then we have two things to change because we have the empty left shift. Um, and then also the, uh, the left shift with some count. So actually, we're gonna take this. And then copy this into here. Uh, and then instead of right shift, we do, uh, left shift. And then we do the same thing here, but instead of, uh, dollar one dot length, it'll be zero because there's nothing there. So with any luck, that'll, uh, have our, make our test pass. And then we just comment out the, uh, the rest of these with our expected counts. That's one. And then there's two. Uh, well, this is three, actually. So that should work. If I had removed things properly. Okay, we're now at seventy-two passing. Uh, and then we move on to parse's multiple left shift instruction. So that was, oh, this one. Um, we actually need to unskip that. Still works. Now we do the same thing for the increment instruction, which is this one. Uh, but same thing, same thing as the decrement. It's just going to be this, but instead of decrement, it's going to be increments. And then really, that should mean that we can do this. And then do the same thing here. All these count types are more or less the same. That's how I want. That's also not what I want. I'm gonna go through this. Copy this. Uh, this is one. And then copy this again. And now this is three. It's nice when you're all, all your tests are, uh, more or less the same. Uh, you just adapt them to, uh, to everything else. Wait a minute, this is a decrement. What's up here then? What did we change up here? Oh, the empty string. Oh. Okay, so then we accidentally did decrement and we didn't need to. Uh, so that means we can actually unskip all these two and, uh, do the same thing here. Zero. This is still three. Okay. Parse is a single decrement. Okay, so now we expect a bunch more to happen. Uh... I missed deleting the expected. That's this one. Oh, something's wrong. Uh, not because, that's because we need to change these from increments to decrement. And do that for all three, all two. Single, multiple. Yep, okay, all two. Still not quite right. Uh, because we unskipped the right instruction. Uh, but that's the only one failing, so we can just fix that. The right instruction is fairly easy. There's no count on it. It's just type rights. Uh, so this is going to be uh, type rights. Oh no, this is a read. We're gonna do these both at once because they're fairly simple. And then type reads or type right in this case. Uh, and then we gotta change this one so that it's now these. And these don't have a count. It's just a single one. Which means we're gonna have to copy over these ones here to three rights. Uh, and then same thing with the reads. Can do this here. And delete these two. Yeah, so now that should work. Right? Continuing on, uh, single empty loop instructions. Loops are going to be a little bit more difficult, probably, uh, so we'll see how this, uh, how this works. Uh, so we're gonna change this from... Actually, let's, let's write the test first. So that we know what it looks like. So we expect here the token type loop. Uh, and then contents to be a, the empty array. So if we're looking at creating, making this to be an empty array, that means that this actually does not need join anymore. Uh, we can just make that that because number, uh, two is an array, an array of all this stuff here. And so what we want is I an object with type, uh, loop. His content is dollar two. And we close the object. And hopefully this is good enough. We'll find out. The unfortunate thing about this is that, so this is kind of annoying to, uh, write, so... That's the one. That's one. And how many loops do we have? We have three loops. So we have, we should have three in total here, like this. And then format that so it looks nicer. Uh, and then this is an empty empty loop inside, no content. Uh, and so then that should be fine. Hey, look at that. It actually works. Parse is loop instructions with content. Now this is where things get a little bit hairy. Not, it's not that bad. But it doesn't mean that we have to make this a little bit more complicated. Um, I don't expect any changes necessary to the parser itself. So it's just another, uh, change to the test. And so what are we looking at here? We have a loop at the outer side. Right, so that's the loop here, these square brackets. And then we have a right shift, a left shift, uh, increment, decrement, out, in, or right reads, and then another loop inside. We gotta do all that. Um... That's a type. Right shift. Uh... Token type dot right shift. But a count of one. And that's gonna be the same thing for the rest of these. So this is one, two, three, four. Uh, paste three of these here. This is gonna be left shift. This is increment. And this is decrement, all with one. Uh, and then we have a type right, uh, which has no count. And then we have another type, uh, read. Also no count. And then we have another loop. Uh, type token, uh, loop. I wonder if I can... Oh, I can't. You're great. Line-wise output is nice. So that should build just fine. Except I skipped it. It's not actually running. And actually ran none of these. So I'm hoping that this actually, uh, that still worked. Hey, look at that. Eighty-four now. Parse is loop instructions with contents. That's that one. Throws on an incomplete loop. This is probably still okay. Um, so we can just unskip that. Throws on stray loop and we can also skip this. And all the errors are all the same. Uh, parse's adjacent word instructions are the same type. Uh, so we expect this to be our copy over the, it's, these were increments, so I'm gonna copy the increments. I should have marked where we were before. Uh, adjacent. Now I need two of these. So these are two separate ones with, uh, two and two. Because we have two was here. Uh, the idea of, of this language, of course, being, the number of was tells you how many, um, how many times to repeat the operation. Um... So we have two there. We'll test this out. I don't expect there to be any issues with this one either. It just work. Very good. Uh, and then same thing here. Parse adjacent instructions, non-instruction characters in between. Uh, so this is a type increment with a decrement. The idea is here, the increments and the right shifts having a wa, or sorry, an ah in front. Uh, and then, uh, the decrement and the left shifts, um, don't have one. So this should work. By the way, if I'm going too fast, uh, let me know. I can slow down a little bit. Uh, but I am going a little bit quickly because this is all fairly repetitive stuff. Parse is instructions after tildes. Okay. And so now we get to the more ambiguous cases. Or rather, it says here the unambiguous adjacent instructions. So the ones that it shouldn't be able to handle without, uh, entering any intervening white space in between. Uh, so this turns into a right shift with a count of two. And then an increment with a count of one. Very good. And now we can see here we only have three more. We're almost done. There was this. Uh, and so here we have an increment, count one. Uh, and then a right shift. I could have just changed up the order. Um, right shift count one. And this should just work after remove the expected. Very good. Uh, and then we have a bunch of reads and rights here. And then take this and then just translate this to that. Uh, we have one increment, one read. Uh, getting rid of this here. And then we have one decrement. And then we have a right. And then we have another decrement. That should just work once we get rid of this. And then one more to do. And then we have to do it the other way. Uh, parse is instructions adjacent to loops. Uh, this one's gonna be, uh, a bit of annoying one to do. We're going to take the loop one. Where's my triple loop? This one. We're just gonna fill this one in. So in here, we have a decrement. We're gonna copy this over. We have a bunch of decrement, actually. There's a decrement and then a loop inside and another decrement and then a loop. And then a decrement. And then we have more decrement outside and another one here. Now, if I did this right, this should be, uh, this should be correct. Alright, we actually missed a couple of tests. Ignores non-instruction characters. So this one should be fine. Uh, except we change this to an empty array because there's nothing there. And, uh... I'm inclined to just... No, I can't do that. Man, I don't want to write this out. It should reasonably work with all the other tests here. So I'm inclined to just let it run. And then just take its output and copy it. Like this. Of course, changing it up so that's something is not quite right about that. Nodes. Um... What is this? Uh, p equals require, uh, source slash parser slash our fudge. Now we have p in the parser there. We're gonna copy this string here. And then we see, uh, p dot parse. And then we end up with this. That's not correct. That's not right at all. We managed to get it here, but that, this isn't right. Hmm? Oh, right, of course. It's this one. Wrong language. Now I'm gonna put this in, uh, json dot stringify so we can copy it out. Um... Does copy function work? Now we're just gonna have to process this. Because I really don't want to deal with this. Okay, then goes that. And I put this through JQ so we can format it. And then we are going to remove all of the, uh, quotes. We're not gonna remove the quotes yet. Yes, actually, we are gonna remove the quotes. Remove all the quotes. We don't need those. And anything in these... Uh, where we look for any... Is it? Uh, anything in uppercase, cause the only things that are in uppercase are here. Uh, we are going to turn them into, uh, Pascal case. Now I'm going to do this with, um... Bim, there's a plugin that I have, uh... Case coercion. I don't remember what it's called. Changing case. Let me buy T-Pope. Emerald case. Hopefully I can find it here. Well, this is actually what I want, though. Um, I want mixed case. C R M? C R, uh, C R M? Yeah, that's what I want. Okay. Alright, so we're gonna create a macro. To search for the next, uh, uppercase letter. And, uh... What is it? Uh, includes... What's this called? Token type dot. And then move right 1, C R M. And move to the next line. Um, and then repeat the macro a bunch of times until we, until we find it, until we finish them all. And hey, that looks like that works. We just have to be really careful here. Now we don't do too many of these, cause otherwise it's gonna loop around. Keeping an eye on the, uh, right down here in the corner, there's 55%, 57%. Uh, that's how far down we are, uh, in the, uh, in the file. We've just gotta make sure that we, uh, don't loop around. Actually, it's okay to loop around once. We have to undo whatever it did, uh, it does afterwards. Actually, it might be okay. Uh, no, it's not okay. Okay, that's fine. Now we copy this. Uh, no, we don't copy this. We're gonna do this. Only there are more, uh... More compact way of doing this. But this is why this is a work session. So we do this. There probably is a more compact way of doing that. Alright, we're almost there. And there we go. Uh, we can then take this... And put it in here. Cons expected is this huge thing. Just format that, so that looks, uh... Oh, that's long. And I moved this up here. Alright. And that should be it for the alafudge tests. Then we ain't gotta do the other one. Hey, look at that. All tests passing for the alafudge parser. We're close to the hour mark. Now I can remove... The alafudge task, cause we no longer need it. Um... Could add it, dash a, status, get diff cached. I don't think we really need to look at this, but, uh, just in case. What do we do here? Um... We had, uh... Make alafudge for outputs, uh, intermediate tokens, uh... In alafudge parser. Okay. Now I do it for the other one. But thankfully, we might actually be able to reuse the same test, uh, test cases. But I think what I did here was reused almost the exact same test cases, uh, just adapted for the other language. So it might be as simple as just copying test cases over, hopefully. So, we're gonna copy this over. Test, uh... Actually, I'm going to... Sorry about skip. Is there an ignore? Oh, it's only in skip, okay. We're gonna skip this entire thing by doing that. That's fine. Um... But we do wanna copy this over. So test, uh, brain to test parsers. Put there. And then we are going to go to that and get it from here. Um, and then we're gonna need to change this again, cause we moved it into, uh, one more level directory. Uh, and then remove this. And then, side by side. Now I put in the alafudge one. Then we just copy it over. Uh, so set no wraps, so we don't get any wrapping, and same thing here. And then just one by one. Cause these should all be the same. Uh, and I'm also going to, uh, strict equal. That should all be the same. Uh, single right shift instruction. Which doesn't exist. No, there's no empty instructions, so it's actually, we can skip a couple of these tests. Parse's multiple. Uh, so that'll be this one. So the grammar, uh, brain F doesn't allow for empty, um, uh, empty, uh, what do you call it? It doesn't allow for empty instructions, but the grammar for alafudge does allow for some empty instructions. And so that's why we're testing those. Not we don't get empty, but we do have a single one. And then we have multiple ones. Parse's empty increment instruction, which we don't have. Parse's a single increment one we do. Parse's multiple increment instructions. That'll be this one. Parse's a single decrement instruction. Same thing here. Uh, decrement doesn't allow for empty, because it's just a bare wa. And so if you have empty, then you end up with something ambiguous and you can't, uh, you can't actually determine that there's an empty decrement. Parse's a single write instruction, this should be the same. Parse's multiple write instructions, this should also be the same. Parse's a single read instruction. This should also be the same. Parse's multiple read instructions, this should also be the same. Parse's a single empty loop, the same. Parse's nested loops, this is also the same. Parse's loop instructions with contents. I believe this is the same. Throws on incomplete loop. Uh, same, no change there. Throws on stray loop end, also same, no change there. Parse's adjacent word instructions are the same type. This one's the same. Potential ambiguous cases, parse's this one. These ones are all new, so I think we have to write these ones. Uh, cons expected is equal to... Uh, we're gonna token type... Actually, no. Well, I ended up using the same test cases, so at least they're all... It's a different case, but they're all the same, sort of. Uh, so this is a increment right shift. Cause all, uh, they all have different ambiguous cases. Um... This is an increment after right shift, so this is this one. And then parses this one, which is the same thing, but with a decrement. And a left shift. Which I don't think I have here. But it's, uh, it's easy enough to change. I'll change that to left shift. Ignores non-instruction characters, so this is also an empty array. And then parse the hello world program, which is... This thing. But I think it still lines up. Okay. So now all of our tests should fail, because we haven't done anything to our, uh, to our actual parser. 140. 230. Token type is not defined. Understandable. So I import that. And this is what we expect, cause nothing's changed. Uh, so these are all our failing test cases, and hopefully... We can just make certain changes, uh, not, not here. Make certain changes that are similar here, uh, to the other parser. Uh, and it should just work. Set F equals yak. And I don't think I need these token types anymore. Hopefully, this is gonna be easy enough to do. Um, we have yylen. Ah, okay. What did I change here? Okay, so I'm gonna do all my transformations over here. Um... That writes? Cause I'm building all of these here, uh, and I don't think it actually matters necessarily what these were. Cause yylen just gives me the length of the number of, uh, numbers of tokens that were in here. So actually, we just need, we don't really care what's in here. We just need to get it to... Create the object here. Okay, so at the top, we have an array. Great. Uh, we do not need to join and trim anymore. Same thing as before. So start off with an empty array. And then for the operations, we do... One dot concat. I don't know, I think this one's still okay. This one is still okay, because we pushed number 2 onto it. It's a single operation. Or an operation is a bunch of these. So this should still be okay. Now it's this one that we need to change, because inputs... So we'll start with the easy ones, the input and output. Uh, this is now... Our read and write types. And then a loop. It's going to be similar, so this is going to be... Also an easy one. Pretty much the same thing here. No joining instead. Um, so we have that. And then... I don't think we need to change this, do we? Now, I think we can actually probably get rid of, uh... Doesn't really matter. But in any case, uh, left shifts, this is going to be... Type. Uh, left shift. Uh, counts. yylen. And then it's gonna be the same thing for the rest of these. So this is going to be right shifts. And this is going to be increments. Uh, increments. All right, input and output and loop. And then hopefully this just works. Uh, of course not. What, what do we... This is why you, uh, do these things case by case. But actually, it looks like it's probably fine. Um, and we just made an error in the test. Uh, parse's plus and the left shift. Which I think I did accidentally plus in the right shift. Yeah, so this is supposed to be left. But apart from that, everything else seems to work fine. So we're good on that side. We're going to do this. We're actually going to change this because I don't think we need these anymore. And that works, that works. Okay, great. We're done with parsing. Now we have a module that parses from, to, and from intermediate languages. We are at just past the hour mark. I think we can spend the rest of the time actually creating something that interprets this intermediate language. Okay. Get add A, get commit M. What was I going to do here? This is, oh, we're new for the other one. Get commit C. And so we're going to copy the commitment message of the other one. But we're also going to edit the message before we do it. So we're going to do that. All right, so now we have parsers for all of them. And now we can go in and interpret these ones. I'm going to get a drink of water here. I kind of wish I, you know, once again, I wish I had done this in TypeScript. Enter follow name interpreter. Actually, yeah, I think interpreter.js. Now we're going to take these tokens. Actually, I'm going to create a directory for this. Because we may need more stuff in here. So we're going to start with a JS file for the interpreter. And then we're going to make a function interpret. I want this to be a generator. Okay, what's the design I'm looking at here? Because we need to keep state, so maybe this is actually going to need to be a class. And yet again, I wish I had done this in TypeScript. We're a constructor. That is the part of programming that I don't like, making decisions. It's funny, making architectural decisions is my job at work. Low level code decisions like this, I can't be bothered to do this anymore. I get other people to do it. Okay, so what I'm thinking of here is thinking about how we're going to display this on the page, right? So if you're thinking, I'm going to put a big scholar draw. Is it dot com? Yeah, dot com. This was leftover from yesterday. Yesterday, we were setting up an LVM. LVM setup, so we have the two disks here, and then you have a volume group. On top, that's LVM, and then we have logical volume spanning both of these groups in a RAID one configuration. But for this one, what are we looking at doing? We have this. Or what we basically have is is the tape, right? And we are going to have. Yes, okay. Why does it look neat for all of these ones consecutively? Whatever. That's why this thing looks handwritten, so it's not supposed to be neat. We have all these cells with a tape. I guess I'm going to use that. We have all these, all these cells on a tape. And what we're going to do is on the website, and say we have the text, or can I put text here? Like plus, 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 right shift, and then plus a bunch more. What's going to happen is that you're going to start off at zero. Start off at start off at zero, right? You increments one, you create one. You process this instruction. That's going to be one. That's and then we process the next instruction. That's another increment. That's two. And we process the next one. That's going to be three. And then the next one here says move over, move the pointer over to one. Actually, I'm going to need and I need this arrow here to serve as a pointer. Our pointer always starts at the beginning, and then it says move over one. And then move over another one. And then we increment even more. I'm just going to copy this over. So we start at zero, and then we increment to one, this one, and then two, and three, and four, and five. And we want to do this in steps, and we want to be able to show that. So the interpreter is not supposed to be fast necessarily. Then we can have a way for it to be fast, but that's not really the point of what we're going for. We want to have a way for it to show the stepwise stepwise sequence. So we have to be able to do this in steps. Which means we need a way for, so what we can't do is have it feed in the tokens and then just spit out the answer. Because that's not going to work. What we're going to need to do is do it in a way that we can work in steps. And a generator is probably the best way to do that. Generator in JavaScript. Something introduced in ES6, I think it was, ES2015. Basically says that you have this generator here. You have a bunch of yield functions inside. Every time you hit a yield, you yield control to the caller. Right? You basically, it's an intermediate return. So you create the generator, or you call the generator. So that starts up and then it goes. You call next on it, so it runs the generator. When it hits the first yield point, it returns this value. You can access it using value. And then you can go back into it, call next on the generator again. And it goes from this point to then, and runs until the next yield, and then it repeats until all the yields are done. And you run into the end of the function or the return. And at that point, the generator is done. So we're going to want to use this kind of thing here. Oh, I didn't know that it had a return type. Okay. We're going to use this. And so we have a function here, function star gets your generator. I guess we can call it run. And we can call this a program. The program is going to be an array of tokens. This is where I wish I used JavaScript, so that I can actually type this properly. But what we also want to do is we have an interpreter. If I could spell that right. Interpreter. Wherein we have a generator method. Which I actually don't remember how to do this in in the class syntax. Class Generator JavaScript. MDN class. Not that class, the other one. Methods. Public class fields, instance fields, method definitions. That's what I'm looking for. One of these in here is a generator, so it looks like it's just star and then the name. And so in this case, we want star run program. In here, we can initialize this with some sort of state. So I have a constructor for this class. This dot state is equal to empty array. So far, it's just going to be empty. We're going to fill that in later with zeros. Actually, we don't need to fill it in right away because with JavaScript, you can fill things in as you need. So this should be okay. The model here is that we're going to have an infinitely long tape. Infinite from the right side, not necessarily from the left. So we're going to have a state there. So in the program for token of program. We're going to loop through this through a for of loop. Just going through all of the, all the tokens in the program. Because the program is going to be an array. You know, maybe I should be writing tests for this. I'm going to write tests for this. Interpreter. Interpreter.js. I realize I forgot to actually delete the old BF tests, so we're going to do that. Gets rm test slash brain. Men the previous commits. Okay. Okay. Cons interpreter. Require from source interpreter. Interpreter. Cons assert require, this is probably fine. And then we define find interpreter. Like so. We're going to have an it case. Find run. I guess we're going to test the run function here, the run method. And then that's fine. So for the run methods, it's going to take in a program. And then it's going to outputs what necessarily? So it's it takes in a program. First case, very simple case, runs the empty program. Cons inputs is equal to the empty array. And then we just run this. I don't know if there's anything expected necessarily. There's no expected output. We just expect it not to fit. So in this case, it's going to be let's interpreter. We're going to do it before each. So before each does something before every test. In this case, we're going to create a new interpreter every test. Interpreter is equal to a new interpreter. Now we have an interpreter to work with. And it's going to be a clean one every test. Interpreter dot run inputs. Now we're going to run this input. Cons iterator. Or constant runner. Let's call it runner. We're going to do run run dot runner dot next. Do we expect this to be done? Since it is empty, I don't expect nothing to happen, basically. Cons results is equal to that. So then we have assert strict. Well. Pretty sure there are more things that we can use there. Table of contents. Strict assertion tracker asserts deep equal does not match fail. If error match, okay. Test a value is truthy. I think we probably want equals there. Yeah. So strict equal takes in the actual and the expected. So in this case, the results dot done has to be true. And then I don't think we necessarily need anything else. Because there is no other output that this needs. So maybe we just ignore that. Okay. Well, this should just work, I guess. Define is not defined. Because not defined is a scribe. Interpreter is not a constructor. Export default interpreter. We also want to export class interpreter. What else is wrong? Unexpected token export. Ah, module dot exports is equal to interpreter. Because this is, we did not use we did not use the module syntax for this one. Oh. Wait a minute, we missed one. Skip. I hope that's actually okay. It'd be fine. Okay. We are going to take that was in the hour fudge parser. Get fix up this thing. So fix up here is an alias that I have for git commit dash dash fix up. Fix up basically creates a commit that intends to patch another commit without changing the the message. So here I'm saying I'm intending to patch this commit. And it prepends the message with fix up with an exclamation mark. And then if you use git rebase, git rebase dash i for interactive and then auto squash, I think it is. It'll automatically do that. I do that patching for you. We're going to do that afterwards. I just have to remember to do it. And so we do the run. We run the program. This does work as you would expect it to because it is just the empty program. As you would expect it to, because it is just the empty program. Those tabs are not good. I don't know why I don't have it set up right now so that. There was something I have in my other setups where I, it tells me. What the, not that one. Also not that one. Stage anyone? Hello? I don't remember how to stage this now. I just did it. What's the key bind to stage of patch? I'm just going to do it on the command line. Um. What was I saying? Yeah, I have, I have something on my other machine where it's. Where it highlights the end of line, end of line white space. Anyway, we can commit this because this is a commit. Interpreter. Interpret the empty program. And now we have to think about how it's going to run other things. So if we design this so that every step it does. Every step it does has to. Has to pause, then we have to make sure that it actually does pause. Well, I need to get up. I'm going to be right back. I'm going to cut to intermission. I'll be back in a few minutes. And we're back. I just had to go grab something to eat because. Dreaming in the morning before you've eaten breakfast. Doing some high, something that requires some, a lot of thinking. Is not a good combination. Okay, what do we have here? Arroot cookies, by the way, or arroot biscuits. Yeah, those are good. So we have this run, run program here, runs the empty program. And then the next simplest thing we can do is run one instruction with. Count one. I guess it'll be an increment or something. Runs. A plus program. Program with a single increment. I don't really know how to describe these ones. But sure. So that means our inputs. Con input equals an array. Where we have type. Token type dot increments with a count. Actually of zero. Single instruction with count zero. And so I think this means that it does the first one. Is it right? I'm trying, trying to think about how this. So the idea is that. With these. With these. Okay, so looking ahead to what I have in mind. When we go through all these steps, it will vocalize. The. The instruction that we're passing. Actually, maybe I shouldn't think about zero. I should just think about one. An increment with a, what account zero is just a single A in our fudge. And I'm trying to think how you would vocalize that. Because presumably what's going to happen is. I'll write this out somewhere. So what I think what we're going to end up doing is we have say const. Same const runner equals our constant interpreter, plus new interpreter, right? This doesn't make any sense. No, this doesn't make any sense at all. I mean, it does and it doesn't. Because it makes sense for this to. To interpret an entire program, but how are we going to use that? So we have a runner, right? Interpreter. Interpreter dot run. Some sort of program. We may or may not necessarily know what that program does. You do runner dot next. And that starts the first instruction. Let's say program. Is an array, right? The empty array. So until. Is it while? Let's current. While current is equal to runner dot next. Or let's current, current is equal runner dot next. Let's do it that way. So while that's happening, and really this is, this is an iterator, so you can actually iterate through these. Only a bit of that for now. Basically, what do we want here? Current. M D N iterator. So what do we have in the iterators? Value and done, right? So we have current dot value and current dot done. Current dot done. Not current done. Current runner dot next. This kind of doesn't work. This is kind of backwards. This isn't. Actually, let current equals runner dot next. That's fine because we need it to, we need to run first. We need to run once first. Yeah, that's right, right? Yeah, that's how that works, right? So the for loop, the for loop, it, it does this one first and then it checks to see if it needs to run the loop. No, that can't be it. Because I needed to run the next first and then check if it's done. Okay, so let current. While. Current. Is equal to. No, this doesn't make sense either. Sure, we could use the for loop. Get it to do this thing. Current equals runner dot next and then we check to see if it's done. If it is not done. Then we don't just do this stuff in the loop. Yeah, I guess that makes sense because if we don't. If there's nothing to be done. If there's nothing more to be done, then we don't need to do the, we don't need to make any actions on the loop. This is fine. Then we take the value and I don't know what the value is going to give us. This is where I could have used TypeScript. So we can define what that says. But we don't, so. This is where we're at. But in this case, then we can say that the value. Is some sort of object that contains. I don't know. What do we have here? What do we need from this? I don't know what this is supposed to do. So I'm thinking about how we're going to. How we're going to. I'm sorry, words. We go back to Excalibur, right? We do this, we interpret this. Or say we have an hour fudge program. This is the equivalent of. And then you make it smaller, otherwise. One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five. That is equivalent with that. And so when we vocalize these, what I want is that we do this once, and then every while. We increments the. The number in the cell. That does mean that we have to do this stepwise. I think, right? We have to do this stepwise. But then what information do we give to the? Because this would be a lot easier if we get the controller to pass in the step. Right? We get the controller to pass in the step, then we know exactly what it is that we have, but. I don't want a controller doing that. It should just be able to give it a program and then every step it returns control to the caller. And then the caller runs something. I think I'm going to have to take this, take this back and think about it. We are approaching a two hour mark anyway. So in the case, so for example, in the case of writing, I think that's easy. Say we have a type. Type writes. Or whatever. I would say output is some character. Sure. Maybe that's the case for the right. And then for the read, it needs to have. It needs to take in some value. Con. All right, type reads. And in which case. This tells the runner. That's. Interpreter. Runner dot next. Oh, actually. And that's why we can't do it there. Current equals runner dot next. So we actually have to do this runner dot next out here. Because if we have it, if I want to read value, that means we actually need to pass it, pass in a, some sort of string. Because it needs to read something. But if we have another type, say we have type. Increments. Current dot value. And we have a remaining count. Same, we started with, with five. We remain, we have four remaining or three remaining. But we haven't told it that it started in increments. Oh, I mean, I guess we have. Because if this is the first time we've seen an increment, then this is the first increment that we. No, but we still need to say that this is the start of an increments. I don't know, maybe we need the next one. With the next token. Of some array. Or some token, so we can peek at the, peek at the next one, but that doesn't make any sense. Yeah, I think I'm going to have to. Why is programming so hard? I'll take this back and design this thing. You see, this would be easy. Actually, okay, maybe what we can do is. Get this to interpret it without having to think about the steps. And then we can think about how to break it up into steps. So that we can actually get it to interpret stuff stepwise. So that part is actually pretty easy. I don't know if I want to do that now, though. Basically, what would happen is that we have an increments count here. And then we have. Cert dot strict equal. I don't want to. I don't really want to do anything with this, so. Because it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what the state is, because this is all internal state. You can do whatever you want with it. I don't want to be asserting anything on the state of this. Or do I? Because I think that we might actually want to see this tape. I think we might actually want to see this tape. Assert strict equal. Interpreter. Dot states. On the first cell. Is one. Yeah, that's, I think, would be the. Thing would be what we have here. Sure, we're going to go with that. So done is true, state is zero, one. That's what we expect, actually, with count one. PM test, we expect this to fail because we don't actually have token type here as before. We need to bring in token type. Okay, that makes sense. And so we have here. Which. Or I may end up be skipping a bunch of steps here for TD. Just because I know I'm going to need this later, may as well save us a little bit of hassle here. It's not really in the spirit of TD, but it's fine. For program, for token of program. We do. Type. We switch on token dot type. And if token dot type is equal to. Token type equal to require. This here. Case token type dot increment. Then we do. We do what? This dot states, we're going to need a pointer. This dot pointer is equal to zero, we start at zero. So this dot states, this dot pointer. We need to. Because I want to, I want to just, it would be nice if I can make this. If I can just initialize this, if it's, because right now it's undefined. And if you try to add anything to it, it's going to be any, not a number. I guess that's any, we don't want that. It would be nice if I can try to avoid having to do this twice. Got to be a way. Right, so I could do this. Kind of don't want to do this. Want to just plus plus the thing. But if I have to do this, I guess I will. Because I could begin with check to see if this exists first. So if. Is equal to undefined, then we do the start state dot pointer is equal to zero. All right, so this is the thing that we can do, and then after that, we assume that it is initialized, and we just plus plus the thing. Which, great, but then we're going to have to do that everywhere. When we do this, we just do this every time, where if we change the pointer. We can initialize this with zero. And then just every time we move the pointer, we can initialize it. So. Now we don't have to check this on every loop, we just assume that it's a thing. Okay. So that's probably fine. In this case, we have an increments instruction. We have. Runner next, and we end up with the states being zero. So that should be fine. PM test, reference token is not defined. Or let's token of program. Okay. I guess we can start with that. And then we can figure out how to break it up afterwards. Get command AM. Run the single increment structure. Now we do the same thing with count three. So actually, what we want to do is. We want to mirror these test cases here. But we started with increments, so we're going to start with increments. To test. We haven't done anything yet, so we expect this to fail. That's fine. And what we're going to do here, if the type is increment, we are going to. Do for loop, for let's count equals token. Dot counts. Let token counts, token. Our counts is. Greater than zero. Count minus minus. We only want to do this if we have. If we have things to decrement, to increment in this case. So this is pretty inefficient if you have a lot. But it does let you, this will allow us to work through stepwise later. What the count number lets us do in the token is that it lets us optimize. If we were to do a fast version. It lets us optimize so that we can just jump the number. Are we going to make use of that in the future? I don't know, because we can, we can have a flag here that says, like, fast is true. And then we can just. Jump. That many times. Ashul Shon welcome in. Yes, this is JavaScript. We are working on implementing a programming language, and I'm going to show up the. Where did I put it? Where did I put it? Oh, here it is. How am I? I'm doing well. I'm pretty tired. Started streaming in the morning, 11:30. I mean, I guess it's closer to noon, but I haven't had breakfast yet. And programming is pretty tiring, but that's okay. So yeah, we're working on this programming language. I don't think you were here for when we did this before. But basically, we are taking BrainF. And translating it into something that looks like this. Inspired by Jelly Hoshiomi from Base Connect. And then this is the mapping here, where the number of was tells you how many times to repeat this symbol. More or less. And so we have the, we have the operating model here, so it's basically a Turing tape. Where, we reset this to zero. All right, you can pretend all the empty ones are zeros too. All right, so we have this plus here, says increment by one. And then all these al was here, that translates to these here. So that, the plus here too, or the other one there is, that's two. And then this plus here is three, and so that's what we're working on right now. And then here you have a right shift, so it says move the pointer to the right. And you have another one, oh, don't want that. Move this over to the right again, and then we have all these five pluses, so one, two, three, four, five. Corresponding each of these pluses. More or less it's. And so what we have here is an interpreter that contains that, right? So you have. If I can bring this up, you have the states, which is a tape. And then you have the pointer, which we can move around. So, and we have that encoded here, we have the state, which is some. Array that we can expand later on, and then we have the pointer pointing to the index in the state. And so we have a run method that takes in a number of tokens. Again, I wish I'd written this in TypeScript. But I didn't, and I haven't moved it over yet. And so we have run program, let's token of program, so we're going to loop through all the tokens. And then we have a bunch of token types, which is. In here somewhere. Right, right shift, left shift, increment, decrement, right reads, and loop. Corresponding to the, to the seven types in BrainF. And so we're going to switch through this. And our tokens look like. Again, this is where I wish I had TypeScript. But it has a type. Actually, we have the test written notes for it. It has a type, and for certain ones, like increment, decrement, it has a count. For some of them, it doesn't, it just has a type. And then for the loop, it has content instead. Like, like this here. We're going to leave loops for later. But what we have here is now that the program running the single increments. With count three, single increment instruction count three. So we expect to see that the states in the first cell, because we haven't moved a pointer. To end up with three. We're just going to run that test now, and then I hope it works. And there we go. That is another commit. Get def. Interpreter. Run single increments. And we're going to do the same thing with count zero, just to make sure that it works properly there too. And as I was saying, the future, future state of this is that for every instruction that we process. It's going to be vocalized, so we actually want to make this stepwise in the future. Right now, I can't figure out how to do it stepwise, and what the best way to do it is, so. We're just going to have it run the whole thing, and then we can insert the steps later. So I still expect this to be zero. Okay, with no changes. Count zero. And then we just do this repeatedly again for the other stuff. So this is pretty easy to do with. This is basically the same thing we're going to be doing for the decrement, so we're going to just copy and paste this entire thing. Where we change. Increments to decrement. This is going to fail because we haven't done anything yet, as expected. And we are probably going to want to. Since this for loop here is going to end up. Showing up for each of the four instructions, we're probably going to want to. What do they call it? Words. Morning streams really don't work with me. We're going to want to refactor that out, so that. We don't get code repetition. But we'll do that later. We got this thing in a word first. That's decrement. And now we have to test the other right shift. So we're basically following the same test patterns that we have here, just making sure that we can actually. Interpret all of these. Actually, I should change the other wording so that it's almost the same. So this is runs an empty increment instruction. Runs the empty program, runs. A single increments. Empty increments, single instruments are increments. Which is kind of different, actually, because. In the intermediate language, it's all one instruction, just with various counts. Runs an empty increments instruction. Runs a single increment instruction. Runs multiple increment, multiple increment instructions, which I think is what we said here. Okay, very good. And then do the same thing here as well. And then we have runs an empty, this one's actually running empty. And then this one is runs a single decrement instruction. And then runs multiple decrement instructions. Typing all these things out inefficiently. Oh, well. Get add dash p. Skip over all the increment ones. We want the decrement one, so we can amend for the previous commit, because that's what we had there. And then we will take this one. Oh, yuck. Okay. Like that. Get fix up this. It helps, it pays to keep your get, get history clean. But it can be a bit of a hassle to make sure it is clean. We're going to do that. And then for the next one, it's going to be this one. And here is where I hope that when we do the interactive rebase later on, it's not just going to fail. Probably going to go on for another 15 or so minutes and then leave it there. It's starting to get headache. So the decrement instructions, I do want to try to get the, at least the shifts working too. It runs an empty shift instruction. So that should be more or less the same as we had. Or the empty, oh, for the other ones too. Yeah, those are all decrement. Okay, good. So we want this. Let's copy this over. But instead of increment, we have right shift. At zero interprets state zero. Actually, in this case, we care about the pointer. We care that the pointer is still zero. We should probably test that it doesn't change anything else, but it's fine. So we're going to start with that. And test. That should not be passing. Hold up. Oh, that passes accidentally because it's empty. Right, okay. And then we want is the single right shift instruction. So token type right shift, we do this and we look at the pointer. And we expect the pointer to be one in this case. And then we actually want the states at interpreter to be zero, because we do expect it to make sure that it creates it. So actually, I guess we need to do that here too. So this is state zero and we expect that to be zero. And so that should be good. Okay. So on the right shift, that should be fine. Left shift is going to be a little bit more nuanced, because we can't let it go past the other beginning. Token type dot right shift. Our decrement case is wrong. Hold up. I don't want to fix that. Maybe not yet. Decrement is also wrong, because there is a certain case. So if you go down to zero, it has to loop around to 255. And that actually depends on the settings that you use for this interpreter. Because in some cases, you actually let it go down to negatives. And in some cases, you just keep it at zero. But the classical, the classical interpreter wraps around, it's just a single eight bit number. So I do this one again. And do this because we know we're going to need it. This dot. This dot pointer. And I'll do that. And if if this dot states. That's at this dot pointer is equal to undefined. Then what we want to do is make it zero. We initialize it to zero. There's got to be a better way of expressing this, but it's not coming to me if there is one. I can shorten this by doing plus plus this dot pointer and do that, but that's, that's probably not a good idea. It's going to confuse people. So this is fine. This is fine, because we have an infinite, infinite side on the right tape. On the right side of the tape, infinite length. So this can actually just go on forever. Okay, so we run npm tests and this should just work. Very good. So 104 passing, whereas previously we had 103. And then we will do the multiple increment instructions. But instead of increment, we do right shifts. What account three? We end up with states. Assert dot strict equal pointer. We expect the pointer to be at three. And then we also expect the states to be zero. Or the state at three to be zero. This should just work. Okay. Get commits interpreter. Run right shift instructions. We're going to fix the decrement. Because the decrement are wrong. Because I want to start at interpreter dot state at zero is equal to 50, let's say. And I want a decrement from that. I don't know if I want to do that there. This one's a little bit flaky, because now we're messing with internals and we don't want to do that. But actually, maybe that's okay. Because I think, I think what I want is to have. I want this to be flexible enough that if you run it on a non-empty tape, it'll just run it as you would expect to run it. And not clear the tape. And then you'd have to make an explicit clear before, if you wanted to run at at an empty state. I said probably okay. Okay. So that means then you can chain programs together. Fifty. I'm sure this is probably fine. In this case, 49. And then you want 47 here. Because we decrement by three. So we expect this to fail. Very good. Because we do plus plus here, it should be minus minus. And there we go. I'm going to fix this up. Sure. Maybe we leave it there for today. No, we should round this out so that we we deal with the left shifts too. Actually, no, there's one more decrement test we need to do. It loops. It overflows. I don't know, we have to do that for the thing too, for increments. We're going to have to do that for increment too. So again, this is an eight bits. This is an eight, eight bits? Yeah, I think this is an eight bits. Is it? Yeah, I know it is eight bit. Okay. So we actually only have values from zero to 255. So it means that if you try to go above 255 or below zero, it loops around to the other side. It overflows or underflows the cell when decrementing from the zero. So we're going to have to do that for the for the increment as well. So if we do constant inputs, we're going to take this from the single cell here. Or just going to take the entire thing. Now it's one. I'm going to make sure that this is a zero. I actually want this at 255. Now this can be configurable. I think we will make this configurable in the future, but for now, we're going to start with this. So this is what we expect to fail. Because we don't have any of that. Dot states, this dot pointer. Minus one. I am almost tempted to make this into because JavaScript does have typed arrays. JavaScript has typed arrays. Which means we can technically go for an eight bit array here. Unsigned. And it would kind of just work. But also, I think this makes things a little bit more complicated. So maybe we don't do that. They're not meant for this anyway. JavaScript automatic overflow. Integer. Is there an easy way to do this? That doesn't just take the module? Probably not. Okay. No, it's fine. We're going to create a constant here. Cell size is going to be eight. So it overflows to 255. Or should. Yeah, so that should work. We'll find out. Oh, that's still not correct. Why is that? Cons max value equals this thing, minus one. Max value plus one. Seems kind of redundant, but it's fine. No, it's so wrong. Why is that wrong? It's 288, 288 not, 256. It is 256. So what am I doing wrong here? Oh, right, right, because we need plus max value. Off by one errors. Okay, what's wrong here? Oh, because it's plus one. Cells. Because I don't want to, it's the max value is, we're going to make this simpler. It should not be this. Because you don't actually get this. Because you don't actually get this. I guess size is fine. We're, we're overloading the, uh... Maybe we just sell width instead of sell size. Uh, because here, this is number of bits, whereas this is number of possibilities that we have. That's fine. And we're gonna do the same thing for the other side, just the overflow instead. But increments. It overflows the cell when incrementing uh... past the max. So we have increments here in the runner. Uh, and we're gonna say this from 255. We should really put these in, um, uh, in some sort of constant or something. Uh, but for now, we're just gonna leave that as is. It's gonna be zero. And then we expect this to fail. Because we haven't done anything yet. We're gonna replace this. And this is going to be a plus one instead. I removed this size because we don't need to. Well, that should be it. I wish there was a more elegant way of doing this, but it doesn't seem to be one. Okay. That's fine. Interpreter, uh, restricts cells to 8 bits. We hadn't done the left shift yet, um, because I kind of want to throw when we did the left shift. But also, I don't want to deal with that right now. I think we might leave it there for now. Um, we have increment, decrement, the right shift, and then we're gonna do left shifts and all the other ones later on. Reads and writes are going to be a little bit more complicated. Um, and will require the stepwise. And what we probably want to do actually is, um, is give a lot of more internals, or give a lot of state in the, uh, uh, in the iterator. So iterator here, the runner dot next actually returns a value um, that we can use to give information about what's in the, uh, what's in the state of the interpreter right now. Like which solid change, for example, and what it was and what it was, uh, what it was now and what it was before. Uh, what it needs to do next. Is it waiting for input? Is it waiting for output? This and that. Um... So, but that requires a little bit more thought, so I think I'm gonna think about that. Uh, and next time, whenever we do this. I highly doubt that we're going to end up doing this, uh, getting this done before, um, Jelly's first anniversary, but you know, it's okay. But announcement time. Um, I did get, uh, art for this. And so actually, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna show you a little bit of something here. Uh, I love 5.0. Jelly. The interpreter, the minimal interpreter. So temp temp pi, um, created a, uh, created another, uh, esoteric programming language called AWO 5.0. Also based on Jelly Host Yumi and got Senna Bonbon to, uh, to create this art. For what it's worth, I did create the specification for my language first for AWO fudge. I just hadn't gotten around to actually implementing it and he got there for me. Um, this is a this is a very fitting language for Jelly and it was, uh, they got a lot of good content out of that. Uh, but I do still want to make sure that, uh, AWO fudge is made into something concrete. Uh, and I do want to have some value adds, uh, on top of AWO fudge. That could actually potentially benefit, uh, AWO 5.0 too. Um, but we have here, uh, temp temp pi's logo, uh, created by Jelly Host Yumi, or sorry, created by Senna Bonbon. Um... Guess what I did? I also commissioned, uh, Senna Bonbon to, uh, to create a logo for AWO fudge. And this is jelly eating fudge, a piece of fudge. Um, this, I have a couple of, um, a couple of variations here. Um, uh, so with the eyes closed, with a bite out of the fudge, things like that, mouth open. Uh, so we will be able to animate this. Um, yeah, if you want to go, uh, check out Senna, great artist. Uh, you can go to, uh, I'm gonna send the link in chat here. Uh, Bonbon Senna. Go, uh, let me go check her out. Uh, but yeah, this will be the logo for our, or rather the, uh, the official art for AWO fudge. Um, and so I'm very much looking forward to, uh, to folding this into the project. Okay. Um, I think that's it for today. Uh, let me just check if the person I wanted to watch after this is, has their, uh... No, you still don't have one up. Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you, um, a link to VS here. Supposedly she's doing a, uh, uh, a composition stream soon-ish. Supposed to be in like 40 minutes. The waiting room isn't up yet. Um, but yeah. I'll be, I'll be watching that, uh, when I'm done here, whenever that's up. So if you'd like. Uh, and I will send the, uh, the link to the actual stream once it's up in the, in the Discord. Uh, so if you're not in the Discord already, um, the link is in the description. Feel free to hang out there. We've got a bunch of, um, good topical channels, including programming. And, uh, uh, yeah. Okay. Is that it? I think that's it. I'm tired. I need to eat. Uh, I'm not quite sure what next week is going to look like. I need to figure out what my, um, what my other responsibilities are. Um, so watch out for the schedule. And that is it. Thank you all for coming. I hope this was somewhat productive for you. Uh, or maybe you learned something or, or, or something, but we did definitely get some good progress here. Uh, I'm glad that we actually managed to get to the interpreter and didn't just end up, uh, writing all the tests. Um, but I will think about how to uh, do the stepwise thing so we can actually start creating the UI for it and have something visual to look at. Um, okay. Yeah, this is, this is a long project, but it'll be worth it in the end. Okay, whatever. Um, I think, I think that's it. That's all I have to say. Uh, thanks all for coming. Um, and I will see you next stream. Goodnight chat.